Thank you for joining us. Hold order. Do a roll call before we do the order.
We will.
We're all ready.
For once. For once, I got Robert's word. I just want to go on. For once, I got Robert's word.
Correct. Yes, yes.
All right, all right.
All right, we'll put that one down. Put that one down for Nancy.
Here. Hi, Dan and Port, I'm sorry. Cheryl Fuller.
Here.
Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Rick Cavanado.
Here.
Don Renner.
Here.
Viola Longa.
Here.
And Simone Black.
We record them now, we can stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start. Besides a laugh, we're going to start with something great, student perspectives from South.
It's all right.
Good evening. Tonight, we have a group here representing a curricular project, an experience that they've had in their U.S. history class over the last few years, and it's a joint project between the history teachers, our library staff, and our literacy coaches. Ms. Col Casey's here, representing the history teachers. Ms. Bukowski's here with the library staff, and we've got several kids here who are going to talk about the project. In the project, they had to research something, interview someone about it, so set up interview questions in interview. They had to write the script and create a video. So you'll hear from the kids, they got to experience a lot in the things that we want them to learn and be able to do, but what they're also going to tell you is some of the side things that they've learned and experienced that are more of a personal nature. So I'll turn it over to the kids. Yes?
Hi, I'm Caleb Minnis, and I'm a senior at Downers Grove South High School. So we did this project, I did mine in sophomore year, which was about two years ago, and so like basically, as Mr. Schwartz was saying, we had to just interview someone who meant a lot to us and see what they had to share and learn from them. And yeah, here's the sequence. We did a little bit of library research at first, and then we did the interview. We also did more library research to figure out how to make the video into what it was, and then we created the video, and then we shared it with our classes and with our families and parents and et cetera. You can press play on that.
Something, some black guy had done something, and my parents never did find out what it was, but she said that somebody told the posse was looking, running, looking for him, and they couldn't find him. Somebody said he had hid under the church, and rather than go, they ain't going under the church looking for him, so they burned it to his death. But they never did find the guy that they was looking for, because he went under in the first grade. But the church was gone. Sure, that was one of the very attrition to posse's days. They only had big hands and all that. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
So in my clip, there's a moment in which my great-grandmother, who was 101 at the time, was talking about the KKK, which she called the posse, because back in the day, they didn't really call them by that name, because it was more of a dangerous thing to do. So she was talking about the fact that the KKK burned down a church because they were looking for a black man who, which now we would say is something innocently done. They thought that it was something guilty and went against what they believed in, and for that, they burned down the church just to get to him. So I learned a lot from my great-grandmother. She lived a long life, and I feel that like everything that she has said really helped me to become who I am, and this is just one of the many moments that she had to share with me. And obviously, you could tell that this is living history, and this is something that not many people can really connect to, and I felt that without this project, I wouldn't be able to delve into these stories that many people don't see unless they read a book about them. And I felt that that was really influential to me as a person. It helped me to join multicultural studies the next semester, the next year, and be able to really like connect with my roots and be able to understand what was really going on in the world and what happened in the past and connect it to what's going on now. Thank you.
All right. So as Mr. Schwartz already said earlier, this was a collaborative project with all of the library staff, the speech specialists, and like everyone in the school to kind of help us make this project. And I press for interest, because I'm thea, because I'm a senior this year. I did this also in my sophomore year. And my clip is about my mom, who was immigrated from Jamaica, and yeah.
So what was your immigration process like for you? It was long, hard, and tedious. Well, I first got a three-year visa. It was actually a student visa. I took some college classes. I was just to get my associate's degree, and I was thinking of going back home. I got a one-year work permit to get a visa, you know, working in America. And after I started to work, I was like, wow, maybe I could make a better life here than Jamaica, so I need to think of a way of staying here. I looked at all my options, well, I basically had three options. I looked at, my sister was going to sponsor me, that would have taken, like, that would have taken about 10 years. I thought about marriage, but wasn't interested in relationships, I was going to marry me to stay here. My mom was living here at times, but we were estranged, so I had nowhere, I didn't know where she was living, so I was out of status, out of status for a couple of years, and then I finally said that I can't keep living like this in America, I need to be free. So I reached out to a family member of mine who was able to get in touch with my mom, and I reached out to my mom, and I explained the situation to her, and she was more than happy to sponsor me here. So my mom, you know, sponsored me, and here I am today, I'm an American citizen after a couple of years.
All right. As you heard, my mom, she just said that the process for her was a very long one. She came here in, I think, 1997 about, and she came here, as you heard, like on a work permit kind of thing. And I kind of learned from this, like how tedious and long and hard the process to become American citizen is. Like, we don't, we kind of take it for granted, how easy it is for us to kind of just be born in this country, have all the options given to us. Meanwhile, she came from a very small country, came from like a very small village, where there wasn't running water, there was no lights, like she, her life was very kind of hard, and to be able to come here to a country with so many great opportunities and so many just things for her to like to better her life, kind of, I learned from this that like I shouldn't take where I am in life for granted, and just I'm very thankful for how I was able to come from just such humble backgrounds that she came from. And I really like love this project, because I was able to learn more about like my personal connection to my mom, and like it kind of helped me, us connect more in a way, because we're able to kind of see where our similarities are and how we both want to, want the best for each other and just like for ourselves as well.
The next one.
All right, I'm Addie Karmic, and I'm a sophomore here at Downers Grove South, and this is my great-great-grandfather on a recording talking about how he was there on the battlefield in World War I when they sang Silent Night.
Wow. Wow.
So in all, it's about 50 years ago, there was a bad tournament in the business, far in the homeland. Around 7:00, we had a phone call. A telephone call shot right after the hurricane thick. So he said to get, wonder what happened. The timer was about 10 minutes to. He had a test that went out and back, face to face, the moon was out in the stars, the snow, pinky tie, the cold, I don't know, I'm in Brazil. A telephone call shot, started to drop, the possibility of company, the power of the church declared, the staff had been early night, in the mountains, hard sun, and farther from the homeland. They were sleeping there, and then, face to face, the guy like this.
So in the recording, he was just talking about like how emotional it was and how impactful it was on his life, and although I never got to meet him or ever talk to him, it was really awesome to just get to talk to my grandpa and look through all the pictures that my mom had of him and really figure out who he was as a person, even though I never got to meet him. And it was awesome just like hearing the stories that he told, and that was on Christmas Eve as well. So even when my mom was really young, she gets to remember him and just kind of having that connection, even though he wasn't really there with me, was really awesome to see.
Can you go back to? Yeah, right there. So Scotland wasn't able to make it today, because she has SAT tomorrow, and so she was studying, but she did her interview on someone who was in the NCAA, I mean, I'm sorry, the NAACP. Those are two different things. I'm pretty sorry about that. But, yeah, you got it? So, yeah, they were part of the NAACP and at the college that they attended, and so she really interviewed them about what the effects were towards the Black Lives Matter movement and certain things like that, and other African-American equality organisms that are going on, organizations that are going on at the moment right now. So Scotland wasn't able to be here today, but this is her clip.
Better by switching over to all Lives Matter or Police Lives Matter?
Yeah, I think the debate is a resentment for Black Lives Matter because of the resentment for Black Lives. I think there's people who are afraid of the affirmation and the humanization of Black Lives. But the Black Lives Matter movement in itself, in its iteration, is a movement to humanize the existence of Black humanity, and for so long, the country has been, has been, embraced Black Lives Matter from the comprehension in America.
So that was the scene that Scotland had, and that was, as you can see, they were explaining the effects of the Black Lives Matter movement.
All right. So on the library website, students have the option to archive their projects on there, and then people with a CSD99 account can access them, but they are private overall. Does anyone have any questions or clarifications?
What a neat thing. It's really neat.
Obviously, you're learning more about the person you're interviewing, but maybe can you speak or elaborate more about what you may have learned about yourself going through the process and, and?
All right. Do you have anything?
Sure, I'll talk. So, yeah, one thing that really affected me was, like as an African-American male, I have gone through many of the things, like I have been able to relate to many of the things that my great-grandmother has related to. Thankfully, not all of them, like the KKK and things like that, but as you can see from Scotland's video even, there are still many inequalities that African-Americans face as a nation. And really, I've learned that you have to deal with many of the things, but you don't have to deal with it silently. There are things that you could do to fight back and try to fight for that equality, and I've learned that you can't be silent, and you can't just let things, let people push you around, and you have to be able to fight for what you want. So that's one thing that I've been able to take from this.
From my story, I kind of learned about myself, how I have to take whatever opportunities I'm given and like use them to the best of my ability, like how my mom, she took what she was given, and she was able to make something of herself today. And I definitely, that like really affected me, because when you're a sophomore in high school, you're kind of like floating in the, like you're just floating, you know, you're kind of there, that's kind of like just a there year. And then I kind of realized that year that I had to like really take what I was given and opportunities and the clubs that were around me and the people that were around me and all of the different things that were available to me, really use them to the best of my ability and like make something more for myself. Any other questions?
I think this is very impressive, and I was just curious if any of you have ever listened to any of the StoryCorps stories that are on National Public Radio.
I have. I think they were online, like there's like a website of them, and I remember listening to some of them about like 9/11 stories and stuff like that. A couple of years ago, I think it was like eighth grade, I remember reading about those, and those are cool to hear, just because other people have all their experiences like that, and you're not, not just alone, but you can mostly relate to other people.
What do they seem to have in oral history of your great-grandmother and your grandfather and your mom? Because, you know, time goes on, and these people are gone, and it's really impressive work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to student board member questions and comments. So do you want to go first?
Just about what they just talked about.
No, just in general.
In general.
So can you guys hear me? Yes. So I know we have our upcoming musical. It's next Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We also had our Mustang Trot. I know lots of people came out for that also, and then, what was the other thing? Sorry. Oh, and we also have our children's play coming up in the spring after the musical.
What's the musical?
The musical's All Shook Up.
All shook up.
Oh, okay.
Oh, and the children's play is James and the Giant Peach.
Wow, cool.
So with North, we just had the walkout on April 14th, or I'm sorry, March 14th, and it was really successful. There were 550 students, and for students that didn't want to walk out, they just wore orange in solidarity. We also sold wristbands, and we sold out of, oh my gosh, I can't even remember, we sold out of, like, I know it was over 500 wristbands before first period, which is really nice. It was like student-led, which was awesome. I was working with, so I was one of the student leaders, and I worked with a really like excellent group of girls, and it just happened to be all girls, the guys didn't step up, but they were awesome. I mean, we just, they did it. Because, I mean, a lot of people were asking, you know, why weren't there any like guys involved? And I'm like, well, none of them like stepped up to it. I mean, there was, there were, there was talk about it, and I was actually asked by two of the like girls who set it up, if I could like help, and I was like, yeah, of course. So it ended up being really successful, and like Ms. Schwars and just our administration in general did such a good job of supporting us, as in just if we needed anything, we were able to ask them and have access to it. So that was great. And then we had the Downers, or the March for Our Lives in Downers Grove, and that was March 24th, and that was also really, really successful. I'm not sure the exact amount of people, but that was also heavily student-led. And then there was also the Brady Company that, like the owners or like the leaders of that company reached out to us, so we would go to meetings with them, make posters, send out polls, do things over social media, and it just felt so good getting the community together, because there were so many people, like you wouldn't even believe. It just, yeah, it just felt really good to lead and just, you know, see how many people supported what you did, so.
Had some nice quotes in the newspaper, too.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I liked your comment about definitely student-led.
Oh, yeah, it was. It was very, I mean, especially our class, like my senior class, we have so many leaders, and especially in the younger classes, there's so many people that are stepping up, which just, I don't know, it just shows, I don't know, we just have such good leadership in our school, and that's really important. So as seniors keep leaving, we'll just constantly have people who will step up and be willing to do things. So, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, ladies. Moving on to the board workshop, the 2019 Title I District Plan.
As the board may recall, we wrote a Title I plan last year. It was a new format, different than we had previously done in every school, or every district, I should say, across the state had to write a new Title I plan. We are required to revisit our plan annually. We're not required necessarily to write a new plan unless what we're doing is substantially different, but certainly revisit it, make sure that the interventions that are in place, we are still doing. And so we've done that, and so we will be extending our 1718 plan. A lot of the interventions that are in here, the board has heard about several times. For example, our Read 180, our Summer Bridge, our Mass Specialists. We also talk in our plan about not just interventions that are supported through Title I, but different programming. So in other words, AP classes, honors classes, Project Lead the Way, those kinds of things as well. So essentially, the board doesn't need to vote on it, but wanted to make the board aware that we are going to continue our 1718 plan for the 1819 school year.
Okay. If there are any questions. Thank you once again for doing the complete report. Board meeting start time.
All right. So this is something that Nancy and I have been discussing over, on and off, over the course of the year. One of the things is that we've talked about is closed session on nights of board workshops, that that's, it's not as common as during the night of board meetings, since quite frequently, we're talking about personal items and those kinds of things that will come up later on for action the night of board meetings. So one of the proposals we have out there is that on the nights that we do have closed session, on the night, on nights of board workshops where we absolutely need to have a closed session, we're proposing that those fall after the board meeting. So everybody needs to get here for those nights. We have the student perspectives, everything else that, everybody knows that that's going to start right at the beginning, we get right through these concepts. There's no action items on those evenings, and in the rare occurrence of the need for a closed session, that would occur after the board workshop. Board business meetings, we would still begin with, if there was any closed session items, in closed session, and then go into open after that, because as I said many times, we need to discuss those things with the board in advance. So I guess the first question is, are we, the board, like that idea? And then if so, what would be the appropriate start times next year for board business meetings and board workshops?
We could start at the same time, because we have several people, including myself, who don't work in the immediate area, and it might be a bit of a stretch to get here. Or we could start earlier and hopefully end earlier.
I'm okay with starting at the same time.
What, 7:30? Is that what you're thinking?
Workshops are at 7:00 PM.
I know, but did you want to start if you have them at both times?
Starting at the current interesting times, and then, yeah. So starting the workshop at 7:00, sorry for clarification, and starting the board meeting at 7:30.
Oh, okay. All right.
But that's just my opinion, based on what Nancy said about people that work in the area.
Yeah, I mean, if we can't get, if it's, you know, I was hoping that maybe we could start a little bit earlier, but if we can't get here, you know, if it's too much of a stretch, it's too much of a stretch.
Oh, okay.
What, you mean, you mean start the business meeting at 7:00?
The administrative staff that has to stay. If we could bump it up so that they're not here, because they come in, they're here all day, and they're waiting two and a half hours for us to get going.
So was your, I'm sorry, I was recording your thought, but it sounds like you want to start earlier.
Could we start earlier?
Yeah. I'm okay with it. I thought you were saying for people who are not able to get here.
Yeah, for so, I mean, it might be impossible for some people to get here before 7:00.
Right. Like Don, I don't know if.
Because you work downtown.
I'd be in favor of starting earlier.
Yeah, I am too.
I am too.
I have the flexibility of working down, or so, works for me, earlier. And I have no issues with switching the closed session to afterwards.
Me either.
That's fine. But earlier, the better, it's fine with me.
Yeah, me too.
Are you, are you talking, what, 6:30?
Well, what are we talking? Are we talking 6:30?
I don't, is that?
Mike, how about you?
Whenever we want to meet, I have, my schedule is pretty flexible. So I, my Mondays, I plan on just being for this.
You've got them blocked out, right?
What's that?
I said you have them blocked out, probably.
Right, I do, and I make my own hours, so.
So right now, if we had closed sessions, we start at 6:00 and 6:30, right?
Well, closed session is dependent on.
On the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
But we have started around 6:00.
So it's usually at least an hour.
Yeah.
Right?
Depends. Sometimes. It's usually either an hour or half an hour, depending on the number of items. We usually try to keep it within those. I think it'd be nice to have the same time for both to be.
Like 7 o'clock for both of them.
Make them both the same.
I agree with that.
I think that that would help to alleviate any confusion in the public's part.
And for the public's standpoint, we videotape everything that we can. So it's not like if somebody said, well, I'd like to come and watch the meeting in person, but I can't get there till 7:30. Well, the good news is, we put them right back out on YouTube almost immediately.
It was the first thing that occurred to me, and I thought, well, probably this is something that originally was set up with part of that in mind.
I bet it was.
But now that everything is recorded, well, we don't record our workshop. Every meeting, we do.
Yeah, we do.
All right.
Wave to the camera.
Smile during the camera.
Acknowledge the camera.
Was there a time when we weren't doing the workshop? It's a special called board meeting for, you know, what's considered as the special board meeting. Well, in any event, I, you know, and we have so many people that come to our meetings, so.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, but.
But it's not like we're trying to hide anything. We're pretty open as a board, so.
So the other issue for you all would probably be just, you know, dinner, right?
Right. It's me getting home to fix dinner and to do dishes and stuff, so, because I get off at 5:00, so.
No matter what we do, I think that they ought to be the same start time, and then I like the idea of what you're proposing with the closed sessions. I think that makes, makes good sense. And I think that's, I think that that's nice, too, for the public as well. You do want to come to a meeting, you're not, at least on workshop nights, you know that that meeting's going to start at 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock or whatever. We've done a nice job, I think, over the last couple of years of stopping closed session, get out here on time, and then recompeting if we need to. But it does make it confusing sometimes for the public, when we see where a closed session starts and where the actual meeting starts. So if we did that on one night, at least there's one night of less confusion with the workshops.
So is this up for vote, or what are we doing?
Just discussion.
Just discussion.
And then we vote on the board. Actually, do we actually vote on the?
Meeting calendar, yes.
Meeting calendar next month.
Okay.
Or next week, next week. So is there any sort of consensus around the time? Or we're doing?
You know, I don't mind starting at the same time and doing it like.
7:00 PM for both or 6:30 for both?
Yeah, let's talk through that.
Yeah, if you said it for 6:30, I'll just make plans and do that, but.
Yeah.
Because that'd give everybody an extra hour.
But 6:30 would make for board meetings, if we have closed session in advance.
That makes it tight.
If you have a long closed session, then you're starting at like 5:30 on the night of a board meeting. Or you just make that meetings, meetings happen. Right. So that would be the other thing, is we could do workshops at 6:30. This wouldn't be inconsistent time, right, between the two, but you could do workshops at 6:30. That way, if it's a short meeting, our workshops tend to be about an hour, and if there's no reason to go into closed session, everybody's out of here by 7:30. If we have to go into closed session, that'd be probably a single item, and board members would be done by, you know, what, 8 o'clock?
So that I'm clear? Are you suggesting, so we're suggesting starting workshops and the meetings at 6:30? Is that, is that the, when you say the same time, are we talking about starting those meetings at the same time, right?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's what I think.
No?
Just to make it uniform.
I just don't know if folks, if we have a long closed session in advance. Now, we can just make sure that action items go before.
And if we have to meet.
And if we have to go, then after, we can.
But I thought we were talking about moving the closed sessions after the workshop.
For workshops. For workshops. For meetings, we could all. Could we actually, instead of saying just for workshops, we could even do it with business meetings if we weren't going to be taking any action, you know, if it was a closed session that didn't involve us.
a closed session that didn't involve us discussing something that was going to be on the agenda for that evening, we could push that closed session to after the meeting as well, right?
Yeah.
That's how it is in many school districts.
Or you could do what you wanted in open session, we go into closed, and we come back.
Bet you.
You could.
It's very fluid, there's not like you have to do it, so, yeah.
So this is... Many school boards do that as well. They will tell the public if they expect action coming out of closed session when they go into it, or not.
Right, give them a heads up.
Right, so if you expect that you're going to come out of closed session and take action, when we go into closed, we tell people, you know, we're going in closed with, and expect to take action out of closed. If we expect that we're just going in to inform the board and discuss some items that are covered under closed session, then you tell the community, we're going into closed session with no action to follow. And then we could consistently start both meetings at 6:30, and there would be no confusion amongst the public, because we have a lot of confusion right now, when people see our agendas as to when the meetings actually start.
Right.
Because we have to list when the closed session starts, and then when the open session starts.
I liked what you just said, start both at 6:30.
Yeah.
I think it makes it consistent, and I think we'd go with that.
I like it.
Yeah, and selfishly, everybody will get home a little bit earlier. But I have one question, and I didn't ask you, I didn't talk to you about this, because I didn't think about it until we were talking about it, but we have under our board policies that no member can participate via phone connection unless they're traveling for business, and I'm just wondering if we can relax that a little bit. So if, we do have people who are coming from downtown, or...
Far away.
Or wherever, and they need to call in for, well, on their way in, if we can do that.
Many boards have policies where you can participate, but you can't vote remotely. I've seen that very commonly, like, we can dial people in, they can participate in the conversation, but they can't cast a ballot unless they're here.
Well, I think with that policy, it was made when communication wasn't quite as fluid as it is now, and so I think changing that would not be a bad idea.
It would just be nice if you're stuck in traffic, but you're coming for the 6:30 meeting, if you can call, because they're not going to take a vote in closed session anyway.
Is that policy, so that must be an ISB policy, though?
There's a press...
Is there a press on this?
...that goes with it. Would you like for me to add that to the superintendent's report next week? Just skip policy, we could just take this one right to...
Well, is the policy committee meeting anytime soon?
We met today.
Oh, today? Oh, gee, daylight, the dollar show.
Yeah, I would like that.
If the policy committee is okay, we can just take this directly to...
Yeah, that's fine.
Get it down.
I mean, that's, that's going to come to the larger board for discussion, it's not going to, decisions not going to be made.
Yeah, we would, without your input anyway, so that saves it.
So we'll add that under reports to the superintendent next week, and take a look at what press says in comparison to what ours says.
So 6:30, people are comfortable with getting here?
Not next week, next year.
Next year.
Wait, what does next year constitute? Is that September, or...
No, it'd be July.
July, okay, all right, okay. I'm just asking.
Next year means two, yeah, a few months from now.
Me, next year is...
So, if I understand...
January.
There's consensus among both meetings starting at 6:30.
Yes.
If there ever needs, in the case of closed session, it would occur afterwards. We'll inform the public if there's action to follow closed session when we go into it.
One last, assuming that since you've brought this forward, in terms of your staff, that's, they're generally liking this?
Oh, absolutely, especially because much of the staff doesn't need to stick around for closed session, so that means we get from the end of the workday into the board meeting quickly, quicker, and then those folks that don't need to be here for closed session can go home.
Yeah, that's the way to do it.
Yeah, that's fair.
That's the way to do it.
Because right now, they're waiting for us to work through closed session, for us to start the meeting, and then...
Hold the meeting, and then they get to go home.
So, a lot of the folks that are here for a variety of reasons would be able to end their workday earlier if we did that.
I like that.
I do too.
Yes, they do too.
Yeah, yeah.
I do have one question. So regarding publishing the meetings, is that generally, because even me as a new board member kind of had trouble always checking back to see what time I was supposed to be where, is that going to be published? I know it's in notes or whatever, but are you going to be able to publish that too on our...
Yeah, we are required by law, once we approve, the calendar gets posted on the website. But it is always confusing with the start time, because, because we, meeting to meeting, we're having discussions, Nancy and I, Pete and the administrative team, and Julie, about how much time do we need for closed session? We're trying to guess right, to make sure we have the right amount of time to post that. This gets rid of all of that debate. We start at 6:30, we have closed session following. I just have to, we'll have to be diligent with the board about, it gets easy at the end of board meetings for those things to creep in time, because you don't have another meeting to get to after them. So we'll have to be diligent in closed session of being, you know, not letting that creep late to the evening, seeing that happen on other boards.
Yeah, sure will.
But other than that, I think that...
Okay. You guys all okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on to the master facility plan, community engagement update?
Uh, my computer died.
Oh, okay. But before we do that, I'd like to just take a moment and recognize a few people who worked on, worked with the community and members of the community, who helped to get the vote in for this, for us to be able to afford the master facility plan. And I have a few names, but it can't be lost, that people put substantial work in on this, on this project. And so I'd like to recognize this part of the District 99 staff on the core team, Jim Coligay, Mark Stalen, Jerry Etheridge, Ken Sorensen, Omar Davis, Gina Zicardi, Ed Schwartz, Jana Schwartz, Michelle Kanan, Mike Reyes, Kristen Kelly, Julie Nidak, and Kim Pekowski. I'd also like to recognize three community members who really went above and beyond, Peg Shades, Tracy Weiner, or Weiner?
Weiner.
And Colleen Loftus. And then two other District 99 members who really, really, really spearheaded this and made it the success it is, and that is Jill Browning and Hank Thiele. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for all the work that you've done on this.
So, related to that work, today we, we kept hounding the election board, Julie and I. This morning, they had a meeting to certify the results, and we have the official results that were sent over to Julie late this afternoon. Total number of votes cast were 22,016.
Wow.
It's a lot for a primary. Out of those, 13,661 were yes, 8,355 were no. So that's 62.05% yes, 37.95% no. So it is a definitive yes. As I have shared, I shared with the North faculty this morning in a presentation, I'll share with the South faculty next week, so I'm going to spoil it for the South faculty, because I know they're all tuning in to watch the video.
Oh, yeah.
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 It is that, you don't get 62% from running, by having a community that runs a good campaign, from having a communications person or a superintendent that give a jazzy presentation. You get 62% yes for decades of good work for your community, good service by the board, good service by the administration, the faculty, the teachers, by your students going out into the community and doing presentations like we saw tonight, and representing the work that we do here every day well. This is a testament to the legacy of District 99 in this community, and it sets us up well to continue to serve this community well, and to have a legacy in here, in this community for generations to come. So, I don't want it to fall, by the way, that's a great list of people that were very involved, but we, we get to, you know, put, plant the flag at the top of the mountain, but that mountain was built, you know, over the last 90 years, and that work is paid off, so.
You take it.
So thank you to all of you and to the community for supporting us. Now we got real work to do. We just made more work for ourselves, so...
Be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, now we have a whole design process. So for the last week, the, our core work team here, many of the names that you heard, read tonight, have been working, looking at what we need to do next, talking to other school districts that have recently gone through major facilities plans, to talk to them about what strategies worked for them, what didn't. So we're working on building out our plan out of how we execute the full facilities plan. One of the things that we have not invested a lot of time in, or dollars in up to this point, are design, right? We didn't want to spend money on, on design and time on design, and architects for something that the community wouldn't want to support, but now the community's supported it, so we got to get to work. We've talked on our team about mirroring the themes and the structure we went through for the community engagement around the master facility. We felt that that was open and transparent, allowed the community to really understand the plan, and to provide us feedback on each of the aspects around it. So we're, we're mirroring that as much as possible in the design process. So an overall planning team that looks at the overall project, and makes sure that everything fits in together in both design and functionality. So we're going to be requesting that the board, somebody volunteers to be on that core team, like we had on the community engagement team, one core member, but then, within these themes, each of these projects will have kind of a life of its own around its needs and design. So we're looking for board members that would like to own different parts of this. So we have the, the learning commons, the idea of safety, security, accessibility, modern learning environment, so how we improve the learning environments, especially in our classrooms, outdoor site renovations, and Tony, if you scroll down there. We have some curricular areas with the science and STEM labs, visual arts labs, culinary arts labs, and then we have some building specific improvements. North, the gymnasium, print street circle, cafeteria, loading dock piece, and at South High, we have the theater auditorium and the student services administration chunk there. So, if you would like to be part of one of these, if you would let Nancy and I know by Friday of this week, because we're going to start building out these teams, of which one of these you'd like to be on, you'll be invited to be as involved as you would like to be. For each design phase, there will be kind of a brainstorming scope outlining portion. Then our architects will put together like an initial design, and there will be a review and feedback on the first design. All of this will be out in the public, and we'll have evening meetings, because we're going to have community members on each of these teams as well. There'll be a second design, and then a final design for everything we work through, with the opportunity for community feedback. Just as we put everything up online with images and video, and opportunity for people to provide us feedback, we're going to be doing the same around each of these design phases. So there'll be open comment periods on everything that we do through this. We want the community to own these changes and feel as though they had a voice, not just feel as though, to, to actually have a voice in the look and feel and future of our facilities. So there's going to be lots of opportunities, if there's any one of these parts that you want to be part of.
So, go ahead.
So Hank, just a quick question. So you said let you two know, are you looking for, just so we give you what you're looking for, are you looking for somebody for curricular?
Oh, it's my question.
Or somebody for science, visual arts, culinary arts, and then same thing with building specific, for North and South, or for each project within North and South?
Yeah.
I would say, tell me what you want to be part of. So if you're, you want to be part of all of the North plans, let us know that. If there's just one of those that, you're really hot on the cafeteria, you know, let us, let us know that that's your jam, and we'll, we'll try to schedule people. Remember, we can't have more than two board members on any one of these, right? So, yeah.
How many categories is it? Because it's seven of us, so if you could scroll down.
He might take two.
Right.
I'm going to, I'm going to do them all.
I think it's the, there's the top one, do you want to give your question again for me? So the corp is one, and then in the themes, we have, what, one, two, three, four in the top section, five, six, seven in the North and South categories, but I would imagine that somebody might want to do visual arts but doesn't want to do STEM. So just tell us, anything on this list you're interested in doing, and then Nancy and I will kind of meet and talk through it.
And kick us out.
Yeah, we might, because we can only put so many board members on each one, so...
So one last question, so are you having separate meetings for these things?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So in terms of time commitment, though, this is maybe a couple hours a month for each of these?
Yeah.
Because they'll be running concurrently, only for the months of...
That we're designing, so, you know, this will really be from now...
Which ones I want.
Until, what do we say, Mark, for the end of design phase one?
And outdoor.
Yeah.
Those are my two.
What did we say for the end of design phase one?
A year from now would be the end of all of the design, so for the first phase, probably, you know, through the end of this year.
And this year being December?
December. They're not school years, they're on real years.
On real years.
But you can be as involved as you want to be.
I've already drawn up some things.
You just let us know how much you can make. You'll be able to see everything digitally.
I've already drawn up some things.
And provide those. I know you guys, we asked a lot of board members already, but we want you to feel like there's a project you're really interested in, or a part of this you're really interested in, that you can sit in on that, you can report back to the larger board about what's been happening there.
Yeah, you got it, thank you.
Thank you.
It'd be really nice if the administration put together a proposed timeline. I know it may be a little premature, but I, I ran into somebody just in the community, and they said, "Oh, congratulations on the master facility plan passing, really happy and excited, you know, just, it's too bad that, you know, my kids aren't going to be able to enjoy it." And I said, "Oh, are they seniors?" And they're like, "No, I have an eighth grader and a sophomore." And they said, I said, "Well, I'm pretty sure we're going to have our, most of that done before, you know, they're..." They said, "Oh, I assumed it wouldn't be done for another five years or so." So just that, and educating the public would be really nice, and educating us so that we have some expectations as to what the timeline is, what the construction's going to look like, how we're going to prioritize these projects. Again, I'm sure some of it's premature, but that would be, I think it would be nice.
So, our kickoff meeting is this coming Friday, and that's where we'll, we'll get our initial kind of timeline set up. So we'll have, just as we had a standing meeting agenda item for the board on community engagement for the last two years, this now switches to a standing, standing board meeting item for master facility plan progress. So get ready, you're going to get an update almost every board meeting from us as to where we're at, and one of the first things will be the general timeline of what we're working on. But yeah, absolutely, Don, this is, this is what we're planning on doing. We're planning on changing the master facility plan website to each of these larger themes, so that as the work is being done on those teams, the community can see where they're at. There'll be a timeline process, there'll be a budget area where everybody will be able to tap into where the money's coming in and where it's going out. So just as open and transparent as we were getting to this point, we plan on being as we, being as we execute the project.
Okay.
So coming soon.
So I just, oh, go ahead. No, I was just going to ask, if one of our student members is interested, do they, they don't count as a board member for the...
Correct, they are not voting board members.
So...
They can serve on any or all. We also have several students in some of these areas that have already reached out have several students in some of these areas that have already reached out to me saying that they want to be involved and active. So, students have already stepped up.
Can I ask a question about that? So, talked about student board members. We are coming close to the end of the year, and it's been great having you, the representative, having you on the board.
I agree.
What's the plans for next year? Is that coming up in a board meeting sometime?
He's sent out, it's supposed to be sent out our applications, and our plan is to bring our recommendations to the May 21st. Is that the date for a meeting?
Great. Perfect. I just wanted to make sure we don't lose that voice because I think it's.
And if they want to participate during the summer, they can.
They have no plans for next year.
If I recall correctly, we had said if the master facility plan referendum passed, one of the first projects would be air conditioning, and that would start this summer. Is that still a plan?
Yep. And next, next week at the, next Monday, we'll be bringing forward that project proposal and contract for the board to.
If we're not done designing until the end of the year.
Good question.
How will, are we ready to do that?
So one of the crazy things your superintendent did about 18 months ago was to instruct Mark and Jim to get all of the stuff in place so that we could do air conditioning this summer. So we structured in agreement with, and worked with White, to put a process in place that should the referendum have passed on March 20th, that we would be ready to come to the board next week with all the contracts, bids, everything else, so that we could do air conditioning this summer. So, we've done all of the work behind the scenes, hoping that the referendum would pass. And if it did, we had things, measures in place where we could jump right in. So we did, we did structure some design for the air conditioning, and that, that we haven't paid for yet. We'll start paying for it in July.
I'm sure we'll get the bill.
But that is the only part of design that we did work through and put in place. It was pretty clear from the board and the community that that was something we would do at some point in the future, one shape or another. So I felt like it was responsible to get the ball rolling on that part of the project plan. And that's how we could tell the community that should the referendum pass in March, that air conditioning would be in place by August of this year. So, so we've been working for the last year.
And then obviously, new spaces that would just be done, that would be done as it's constructed.
Yeah.
But you're, what you're talking about is the design of the existing spaces, implementing HVAC within those spaces. You already have a plan for that.
Exactly.
For clarification, I had someone reach out to me, what happens next regarding the referendum? Because someone mentioned to me, just so we get it kind of unrecorded, about November. So, is this, this is a done deal?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just want to go on the record of saying that because someone was saying, okay, now we need to be prepared for November.
This was binding.
So this is certified now by the Election Commission as of today. There is a 60-day appeal window, but somebody would have to find 62.05% or 0.6% of the votes that were invalid to make it go the other direction. So this is pretty solid in place. And then, Mark, can you walk them through how the financing and levying process works then?
Well, we're going to issue, we already have some meetings with some local banks. We're going to issue $9 million, maybe a little bit more this year. The reason we do such a small amount there is we only have the air conditioning going on, so we don't need to, you know, start paying interest on it. Arbitrage rules are set so that you can't earn more interest than you're paying. So there's no real benefit to us to having it in the bank and pay it on the other side. So, we're going to do $9 million this calendar year, well, actually, this fiscal year. And then, we'll start looking at doing another 40 million segment. We'll do it in three other segments. It really will depend a little bit on the, on the construction schedule. And once we find out what that will be, we'll try and mirror some of that with our issuance of the bonds. We could issue all of the bonds, you know, right now if we wanted. But we're going to do that kind of married up to the construction payouts. So.
Mark, if we're in a, if we're in a rising interest market, is there benefit to issuing bonds earlier than later?
Well, you're paying interest on it, too, though. But, yeah, it, we are, we are expecting it to be a rising rate to go up. And we've allowed for it to be up as much as 1% more than what it is currently now in the third year of this. So, which would be a pretty, pretty big move. And actually, the long, we're watching the yield curve, and it's pretty, actually pretty flat right now. So going long isn't that much more expensive than the short stuff. But we are watching that to see. And if it starts, if it starts to get really volatile and it starts to get where there's not much competition for our money, and the rates are getting, we think will be higher, we might do 80 million in one shot. So we, after this first year, we're trying to do this first piece, bank qualified. Number one, because we'll get probably a very attractive interest rate on it by going to a local bank. And they're tempted to go with, with us because 9 million is pretty manageable by local banks, 40 million isn't. So they can do that, but it's also bank qualified. Means they get certain tax credits if we issue it. And you can only issue up to $10 million of bank qualified debt in one year. If we did $11 million, it would taint all that money, they would lose their credit. So, we're going to be very careful to only issue $9 million in, in these bonds, and then probably another million in leases because of the Chromebooks and different things that we're going to do throughout the year. So we're leaving $1 million to cover all of the other leasing because that is also bank qualified. So, we're staging it that way. We could, though, if things get really crazy and we'd see the rates going high, we would probably issue them, issue the bonds.
So if we're only issuing a small portion of 136.6 that was authorized by the referendum, next year, our taxpayers are actually going to see a reduction in their tax bill?
No, they won't. Because that's why, 9 million, our tax amount that we're, that's falling down is $9 million. So this first $9 million, we're going to, it's going to be very short. We're not going to put that out for 20 years. We're going to put that out just for the first year. And that'll fill one and maybe a half year of the, not even half, probably one and a quarter year of that, that when the.
The difference.
The difference. So, it's going to drop by 8.9 million or 8.8 million right now because that's, that's the drop off. And we're going to fill that right up with this $9 million issue. It'll be a pretty short, and it's another reason that it'll be attractive to local banks. They prefer really shorter maturity than longer. And then, in the following, then we'll start to fill in those trenches all the way going out 20 years at a crack, where we start doing the 40 million pieces. So we'll just fill in each year. As long as we keep a year ahead of the tax levy with filling up that $9 million, we'll be fine.
So one, will people see the new increase that they just voted for show up?
It'll be in the next year, next tax year. So we, you know, unless we didn't issue this $9 million and held off on that. But we're starting with the construction already, and we know that'll be in the $67 million range. And so that matches up pretty well with our 9 million. And we'll, we'll have a little bit left over to start the design, pay for design and other things out of this first issuance.
It's nice that a portion of this can be, you know, financed by local banks. I think that's a plus for the community as well.
And even the, even the bigger amount, we're going to use an underwriter for that. And they'll, they do sell to local investors, you know. Raymond James is the company that we're looking at right now to do that. They're bigger than William Blair. Couple key people that we use, Liz Haddesi, you may remember her from prior meetings. She works for them now. So it's, they have, they go to a different market. They go to local investors. They go to individual investors for IRAs and different personal wealth. So, because a couple people had asked me at one of the meetings, you know, hey, I'd like to buy these bonds. What kind of interest rate do you, you know, they want to support them. And so we will let them know it's available.
How long do we have after the referendum passed to sell bonds?
You have a, I've got to make sure, I think it's a five-year window for authorization. And once you have the money in the bank, you have a three-year window.
To use it.
To spend it. So, I might have those reversed, but it's a three or five-year window for those two.
So there's flexibility.
Yeah, yeah. You don't have to issue it all at once, and we never intended to.
Okay.
This is really exciting. Really exciting.
As I said, there's a lot of work and a lot of new learning for all of us to do over the next year and years to come. So.
Yeah.
Anything else on, or questions on master facility plan?
Okay, hearing none. This is going to be the opportunity for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Does anybody wish to address the board? Hearing none.
I move that we adjourn.
What? Terry moves that we adjourn.
Second.
Dan seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.